All right, good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. Video, are we ready to go? Okay, thumbs up. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is John Frank. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals in the City of Fall River. It's now 6:00 PM on Thursday, August 17th, 2023. We are meeting in one government center in the committee hearing room. This meeting is... Sorry, lost my place. There we go. This is a meeting of the local public body and such is subject to the Mass General Laws, Section 30A, Subsection 20, commonly known as the Open Meeting Law. Pursuant to Mass General Laws 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded both by video and audio devices by Fall River Government TV. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now, and I shall make a public announcement of your intentions. Nope, okay. Present this evening, we have permanent members to my left, James Cawkins, Dan Dupere, Rick Sahadi, John Silva, and alternate Eric Kelly, and John Silva is also an alternate. Also, immediately to the left, Dan Aguiar, Director of Planning. Far to the right is Chris Carino, Assistant Planner, and to my right is Nina Kruger, the Recording Secretary. Have all petitioners been considered and properly advertised and interested parties notified according to the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yes.
Thank you. I declare the August 17th, 2023 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to be as its regularly scheduled business come before. The meeting is now open. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners, the butters, anyone in support, or anyone opposed to the position, petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chair. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that the Board of the... is this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the Ordinance of City of... the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may require... may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title of your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after the decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan review. A copy of this ordinance is available at the city's clerk's office... at the city's clerk's office from the plant... or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here ever... here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinance. The newly adopted city charter, Section 918, mandates that all municipal member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides the citizen input for the zoning Board's specific matters at the end of this meeting. A sign-up sheet is on the table in the rear of the room. Finally, I disclose... I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River's zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance... if there are any questions. Are there any questions? No questions. Let's start the meeting. Okay. We're going to start with 01 of old business. That is 67-77 Mason Street Realty Trust, Attorney Jeffrey Maderas.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Jeffrey Maderas. I'm an attorney here in the city with the law firm of Burke, Espinola, and Van Colen. I represent the petitioner this evening, John America, and as a trustee to... and we ask for a special permit to subdivide the property located at 67 and 77 Mason Street. That would leave a three-family on one proposed lot and a three-family on the second proposed lot. If you look at the plan that was submitted with the petition, you can see that we will have access easements and utility easements that assist both lots. We'll also create some off-street parking places to alleviate some of the parking that is on the street. We have proposed the separation of the sewer service and the water lines, as shown on the plan. So under the 40A and the ability under the Fall River zoning to apply for a special permit, that's what my client did.
Okay, just a question you mentioned about separating utilities. On the plan, it says retain existing sewer service, and it's a Y going into one bite.
So retain it as it pertains to that particular dwelling, but then there's a black... so you can see where it says proposed 77 sewer service.
On staying on the left, and the new one is going to be on the right.
So that's going to be retained, and then we'll have a utility easement that will be on record with the new deed as to maintaining that sewer line.
Members of the Board, any questions? Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition?
Sean, I just have one question. Will they have separate sewer meters then?
Well, they're going to have separate water meters.
Okay.
So if they have separate water meters in there, but that's what it is.
Okay. Director of Planning, do we have any comments?
Just the standard site plan review to be filed for the utility separation, so that way the sewer department has the ability to make comment on the proposed method for the separation. Where we have it, access easement running up through the property, no fencing along the newly created lot line, and then just the standard affidavit to be filed at the Registry of Deeds stating that all of those utilities have been separated prior to the conveyance of either piece.
Mr. Chairman, I move we grant the... approve the special permit that's subject to site review and recording of the separation of the utilities before the conveyance of the properties, and that no borders be placed along the division lines because of the easements.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Yeah? Take a vote. Do we have the voting members on this one? Yeah, it's going to be... sorry, shouldn't have mentioned that at the time, but right, we have one, two, three, four, five. Mr. Kelly is going to be sitting this one out, so one, two, three, four, five. John Silva's voting on this. Okay. Mr. Cawkins?
Yes.
John Silva?
Yes.
Rick Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
And Chairman Frank, yes. Motion passes. Okay, item 02, 118 and 120 Jefferson Street Realty Trust, Attorney Jeffrey Maderas, map F01, Lot 27.
Once again, members of the Board, this is a pre-existing non-conforming use as to two structures on one lot, so the petitioner therefore, just as in the previous petition, seeks to separate the buildings into two separate lots, leaving a two-family on one lot and a four-family on the other lot. They are also looking for the access and utility easements. They've also created an off... or two off-street parking spaces to each building. There is the proposed sewer service for 118 as well as the proposed sewer for 120 with regard to the utilities, as shown on the plan.
Oh, all right, so there's two in the back and two in the front.
That is correct.
Members of the Board, any questions?
I have a question, Dan, for you. Is that street, is Jefferson, due to be resurfaced or anything in the next year?
Which section of Jefferson does this fall on?
It's near the Walmart, right past the Walmart, going toward Brayton Avenue.
So yes, so from Brayton Avenue to Warren will be reconstructed curb-to-curb, probably not for a year. We're going to run the water line through, so I think there's plenty of time to get this done. Excellent question.
And that would be the time to do it?
Absolutely.
Hey, Dan, any other comments?
Nope, just the same as the previous, just the standard conditions that we normally apply to these.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? Members of the Board, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we approve the special permit with the usual conditions, site plan review. Separate utilities also, yeah. Usual, yeah.
And no fencing along the...
Because of the easement, no fencing.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
John Silva?
Yes.
Rick Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
John Frank, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you, members of the Board. Have a good evening.
Are you feeling better?
You too.
Who's my wife?
Oh. Hard, yeah. Did you move out for the two weeks?
I tried.
She was quarantined away, no.
Okay, we have item 03, Fidel Estrella, Care of Attorney Peter Salino, 50th Street, California Street, map J08, Lot 68. Applicant seeks permission to construct an addition onto an existing structure as well as a detached garage in his yard. The applicant also seeks a variance for lot coverage, special permit to extend... expand pre-existing non-conforming structure, special permit allowing private garage larger than allowed in a G general zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Peter Salino, on behalf of the applicant, petitioner Fidel Estrella. Many of you will remember that this was continued from the last meeting. The reason for me making a motion to continue the petition was hearing from the butters relative to Mr. Estrella's construction vehicles at the site. And so I have with me this evening a commercial lease that I will pass in as part of the record that indicates that Mr. Estrella has found a spot in Tiburon to move his construction vehicles to... it's a fully executed in blue ink lease to move the vehicles off-site. My sincere hope is that that will quell concerns. Mr. Estrella has advised me this evening that there have been cameras at neighboring properties pointed on his property at all times. He feels very uncomfortable with this. He's seeking to build the garage, expand the house, and, you know, move on with his project. As I stated last time, we've been before the city council for the curb cut permits, so that's in place. As the Board will remember, the relief sought here is a variance for lot coverage, special permit for expansion of the dwelling, and a special permit for a garage greater than 750. There was a small amount of discussion last time relative to the setback on the east side of the property, and I think that was well settled that it's allowable... a four-foot setback is what's required for a garage, so there is no need for relief there. So I'd submit to you that I think we can address the concerns of the vehicles by submission of this lease and submitting to you that the vehicles will be off-site, and we'd like to go forward with the petition as presented and argued at the prior meeting in July of 2023.
And Nina, if I may approach and submit this as part of the record. Thank you.
Would you just refresh our memories of the use of the garage?
Yes, my client runs a construction company, and he has material and things of that sort.
It's a small business, like me and two nephews.
It's a small business, yeah. We understand that, Fidel. Yeah, it's a small family business, not a big company. I think that's been argued and settled. But Mr. Cawkins, to answer your question, personal vehicle use and materials are what's intended to go in the garage. And the construction vehicles, again, that we talked about last time, will be at that site in Tiburon.
Will there be frequent use of the garage? It's advised there by the other vehicles coming in and out.
That's not the... no, that's not the intent.
It's... yes.
Fair question, but not the intent at all. I've spoken to my...
Yeah, I think last time there was an issue of they were talking about picking people up at 5:30 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning.
It's not people, they're missing, and it's still my nephews, my family.
Understood, but we... Fidel, yes, we understand, Mr. Frank. I've spoken to my client about business use, et cetera, and the design of getting those vehicles to Tiburon would be that those would be picked up and dropped off in Tiburon, not on California Street.
Okay, members of the Board, any other questions?
What... how long is that lease for? I haven't got the form yet. Is it...
It's a one-year lease.
One-year lease? Okay. There was some... there was some equipment still there, not trucks, but there was stuff in the back. Is that...
That's not like some ladders and the... or most of the materials for control my garage. It's not stuff to the bin that's... that's going to use to build my garage, the one I have.
So I think what he's saying is he's going to use that material to build the garage that's proposed on the plan. And the lease itself is specific to removal of construction equipment and vehicles.
Any other questions?
Just a hypothetical. What happens after one year if the lease is not renewed?
It's a fair question. I don't think it's a hypothetical. I think this Board has the ability to impose conditions on their grant, so if there were a condition in there that required either provision of or no commercial use, we're certainly willing to accept that. But I can't forecast or guarantee past that document.
Very reasonable, right, on this lease?
It's just dirt. There's no building. It's just a piece of dirt.
Still, that's pretty good.
That's the one concern, is that there will still be storage of materials, tools, so on and so forth, in this garage.
No materials in all, no materials in all, because I don't supply materials to any customers. I only do the label. What I have is my leftover on the side, that's what I got to use in my garage.
Mr. Frank, Fidel, let me take care of... So I think ultimately, I hear your concern. If the Board were to impose a condition saying no storage of materials for outside jobs, can you live with that? That's the...
Yeah.
Okay. So that can be a condition that my client will accept.
Have any efforts been made to consult with the neighbors on this?
No, he's put off by this camera thing. He has kids. He said he feels completely uncomfortable with it, and he just wants to move on with this project.
Okay, anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? Yes, ma'am, could you give us your...
On the record, my name is Lucille Bouchard, and this is my husband, Alfred Bouchard. The camera in question has been there for five years. It's been there for the previous occupant of that house. I have one there, and I have one in the front. If you go by my house, you will see that my bedroom is ground level. Somebody could just throw a stone, anything in there, and just get in. That is why the camera is there. It is not to spy on anyone. It's there before Mr. Estrella was there. Second of all, I just reiterate my case. To me, you put this out as a garage. Why isn't it put out as a three-stall garage? Maybe some of the other neighbors... I would assume that other neighbors in my neighborhood got letters saying about this meeting and what Mr. Estrella is... wants to do. Nobody did, right? We did. And that... I say that because they're going to be looking at a three-stall garage in... in somebody's yard where it's only... it's too large for the yard. Second thing of all, yes, four feet is the limit that you can put a how... a garage... a detached garage. My house is over 100 years old, where three feet from the property line. I can't move my house. When that house was built, there were no rules and regulations. Now there are rules and regulations. So why do I have to suffer when my house has been there for all of this time? I wouldn't mind a two-car garage pushed away from the house. I wouldn't... that wouldn't bother me. But a three-car garage, nobody else on the street's got notifications of this. I don't... I don't think it's fair for me. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Just going to... yes.
Okay. In response and to reiterate, four feet is the allowable setback for a garage, so there's no violation here. Second, I can't really respond to who got notice or who didn't. That's the second meeting. I'm certainly sure your clerk can indicate that notices went out as per usual.
Yes. They did. Okay.
Right, it clearly states garage larger than allowed. Anyone else opposed? Okay, Dan, any comments?
Yeah. What's the height of the garage?
Eighteen feet.
We're not going to exceed the allowable 18 feet, because that's additional request for relief, so it's 18 feet to the peak. Okay. And then, as Attorney Salino had stated, the Board has the ability to put any condition they wish on any type of relief that they grant. But keep in mind that those conditions are then to be enforced by the zoning enforcement officer, which is the building department. So if this lease runs out in a year, and then Mr. Estrella decides to move all the equipment back to California, well, now the chase is on for our building inspector to enforce the zoning decision that you put in place. So the teeth are there, but it's a process. I would recommend that there's, you know, if you do wish to approve it, you know, some very strict conditions with regards to no commercial vehicles on-site, other than the one vehicle that Mr. Estrella would drive to and from home every day and is to be kept in the garage, no commercial equipment, no backhoes, no concrete mixers, I don't know what construction business...
No, I don't have... I'm sorry.
None of it is to be in the garage or in the yard. I think there was a concern about potentially heavy equipment being stored in the rear portion of the property. So you have the ability to clean up what may already be happening there by imposing some of these conditions, and it's within your purview to do so because you are relaxing, you know, the zoning bylaw. So by all means, think of whatever you think would make this a little bit more acceptable to an butter regarding what type of activity takes place, you know, on the property. With regards to the cameras, if Mr. Estrella feels that... that the cameras are impeding on his security or his well-being, please contact the building department and the police department and feel that your rights are being infringed upon, and they'll take that up. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals. We don't deal with that issue here. But there are bodies that will. So if you do honestly feel that uncomfortable about it, there are agencies to seek out to resolve that. That's all I have.
So therefore, Dan, what you're saying is that if we impose those conditions, as you stated, then the lease becomes irrelevant. It doesn't matter how long it is or whatever. Those conditions are there regardless of the lease.
Yeah. I mean, the lease at least shows you an attempt. I don't want to ask if the zoning on the piece in Tiburon is allowed, because we're not Tiburon, but so that gets us past maybe the first year. It doesn't say he has to go use it.
Right.
You can lease it for whatever short money he's leasing it, but then still work out of the house.
Right, but that becomes...
So be creative in the conditions you place that you're comfortable with no commercial activities taking place on this property.
Right.
Regarding vehicles, equipment, materials, flammable materials, again, what kind of a contractor... what kind of work do you do?
I do like carpentry.
Carpentry, just general carpentry? Okay.
Not... I am not general.
No, general carpentry.
Yeah, just...
Yeah, but I don't have any, like, only I have ladders.
Well, we don't want to see staging on the side of the garage.
Yeah, staging in ladder, that's it. I don't have any...
But you can't keep that... you can't keep that here?
No, I can't. I don't... I know that, so...
So it's going to have to stay on the dirt in Tiburon?
Yes, correct.
Okay, you understand that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion denied by John Silva. Do we have a second? I'll make a second. Have a vote.
He's a voting member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Jim Cawkins?
No.
John Silva?
Yes.
Yes. Rick Sahadi?
No.
Dan Dupere?
No.
Chairman Frank, yes. Motion 3 to 2 does not pass. We have a motion to grant. I'm sorry?
I'd like to, and I get a vote, kills him anyway.
Well, the motion to deny does not carry. That doesn't mean that someone can't change their mind. So do you want to go through that motion by all means? Someone would have to change their vote. If someone chooses to make the motion to approve.
Do we have any other motions?
I will make the motion to approve with the conditions stated by the Director of Planning. Would you reiterate those, Dan?
That there would be no storage of commercial vehicles, equipment, or materials, either inside or outside of the garage or house, other than the singular vehicle that the homeowner would drive to work every day. So if he's got his pickup truck that's lettered, that vehicle can come and go all day long.
Materials?
No materials.
Good, Dan, Nina?
I think, Dan, what you've kind of brought up, and what my concern is for voting no, is that if a year later something happens, then people are chasing the building inspector, and we don't know that there are not enough people who can say no. And in that period of time, the homeowner, the neighboring homeowner will be affected until that gets resolved. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to grant. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by James Cawkins? We will now take a vote.
Yes.
James Cawkins? John Silva?
No.
Rick Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
John Frank? No. Motion is denied. Item 1. Mayiza Silva, am I killing that? I'm sorry. Apologize. 169 Barnes Street, map K19, Lot 39. The applicant seeks a variance to build a 33-by-24 attached garage, waving front yard setback, lot coverage in a G general residence zoning district.
Mr. Chairman, before you continue, is the applicant here tonight?
No.
So we've tried for a number of weeks to contact her because the legal advertisement has not been there.
Can we take that outside, please?
Do you have a check to pay for the legal advertisement tonight? Or would you like to continue the hearing? You have two options. Because without the check, it can't go forward. If you can go call her, and we'll take you after she gets here with a check, then...
I don't have a check, but I do have cash or a credit card.
Okay.
So either one.
Mayiza's not around?
Uh, she is not, no.
Okay, she hasn't been around for the last few weeks?
No, she's actually...
And then, she's actually, uh, she's, um, uh, back in her home country right now.
Oh, I get you, okay.
So she, she won't be back for another, uh, week and a half.
All right. I mean, if the board wants to accept cash or if anyone has a checkbook with them? No.
You said she'd be back in a week and a half.
If you get denied, anybody shows up.
Yeah, be back in a week and a half. You know, possibly, I mean, she will be back in a week and a half and plenty of time for the next meeting.
But then they'll pay another $350 to be tabled, so.
We can move the waiver, can't we?
Yeah, we can do that.
If, yeah, if you choose to or accept cash. That's, that's your call.
Can you logistically accept cash?
I don't know. That's why I said, does anybody have a checkbook? Does anybody have a checkbook? No? I have one in the car, but I'm not, I'm not.
To me, the prudent thing.
We can take cash.
Do you want to, do you want to write a check to the government and they'll give you cash?
Chris is saying, Chris is saying we can take. According to Chris, we can take cash.
Yeah.
I've never taken cash, so.
That's fine.
All right.
How much is the fee?
$1,900.
Hold on, I gotta hit the ATM.
It's $19118.
Well, you know what?
Do you want to go to the ATM and come back? We can pay you to later. Not at all. Oh, he has to go to the inside wall.
Oh.
It's the one his wife doesn't know about.
Do I change? Now that's the question.
Now that's the question.
Well, how much was it? Well, how much was it? Come back tomorrow to get the change.
Okay.
Okay.
If you want to bring a check, she'll give you the $200 bill.
Yeah. That might be more logical.
Yeah, if you want to bring a check tomorrow.
Yeah, that's fine.
The retainer has been accepted for the, uh...
You are in.
We will, uh, deal with that tomorrow. Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay. We can move forward with the...
State your name, please.
I'm John D'Souza from, uh, North Counter Group with the, uh, the engineering firm that, uh, will produce the plans that you have up on the screen. My client is looking to raise the existing, the garage that's in the, uh, upper right-hand corner of the property. And she's looking to do a three-car garage up on the front. The existing house right now, the front of the house is sitting on the property line with a zero, uh, setback. And she wants to attach the three-car garage to the existing house and carry the, uh, setback with that, uh, at the same elevation. This will also reduce the, uh, steep, uh, driveway that currently exists. So she be looking to do the, uh, topography as one of the hardships because right now there's almost an eight-foot elevation between the street and the, uh, the driveway where it enters into the garage. The, uh, the only relief that we'll be looking for is just the front, uh, setback, it meets the, uh, side, uh, setbacks. The other relief that we'll be looking for is the amount of impervious, uh, coverage on the lot. With the, uh, three-car garage, it would bring up the impervious coverage to, uh, 92% on the property.
92 or 73? Plan says 73.
Yeah. Originally it's, uh, 73, but it's, it's at 92 because of the add-on on, on the garage. There's, I know on the plan it says, uh, 73 on the original table, but up on the variance, right underneath the stamp, it's 92.
Okay.
So it, it is at, at, at 92.
Gotcha.
At that point.
Any reason why the two tables are different?
Uh, it, other than the squibbers ever, no.
Okay, so is the existing garage going to be raised?
Yes.
What's going back in that place?
That is, uh, she wants to create a, uh, patio, extend the patio.
So you're expanding the patio as well?
Right.
Which is not shown on the plan.
Uh, no, it, it only states, uh, the patio.
Says existing patio.
Right. And that's going to extend to, uh, the, uh, garage area.
And where the driveway's being removed too? That's going to be patio?
Uh, up to the...
How about the grass area behind the garage to the patio? That's all going to be patio?
No, the grass area right behind the garage is, uh, remaining.
Okay, so with the grass that's behind the garage and the grass that runs along the west side of this property?
Yeah.
That's still, that's only 8% grass?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's about almost eight, yeah.
So where, uh, where the garage is proposed, there was like three or four cars parked in that driveway and it looks like they put a whole new patio thing in there?
Yeah, they...
Are they going to tear all that up then?
No, the, she's keeping the existing patio, they, they're removing the garage and they're, uh, terracing the patios because of the steepness that it's going on right now.
So the, the grass area behind, because that driveway there, it looked like it was all stone patio in there where you have the grass area.
Do you have the aerial photograph? No?
No.
Eric's looking at a very good aerial that gives you a good feel.
Okay, uh, unless, uh, unless they just added that in, uh, because I know when we ended up doing the plan, it was grass at that point.
No, no, there, there's grass, I think if, yeah. There is a grass section though.
The patio's thing there was really...
Yeah, I'll, I'll, unless, uh, she already had, uh, it changed that without my knowledge. Uh, that's an old, that's a, yeah, that's very old.
What do you want, Google Earth? Just go to Google Earth and look at this regular satellite view.
Yeah, Google Earth shows a multi-level terrace.
Yeah, there's a multi-level, uh, terrace in right now on the back over there.
So that triangular patio, I guess that runs up to the stairway to the back terrace?
Yeah, and then, and that's all, uh, multi-level. You go up into one, then you go up to another.
That's all staying?
Yes.
But the garage that's there now is coming out?
Yes.
The terrace patio is going to be extended?
Patio going back into that place.
Yeah.
So that does show that there's going to be some grass area behind the garage, a new garage being built?
Well, the, uh, the grass area is supposed to stay, uh, but...
Wait a minute, which grass area are we talking about?
The one that is right behind the garage that's shown on the plan.
Look at, look at where Chris is pointing to on the big screen.
Yeah, no, no, right there.
That will stay grass.
There's going to be grass there, but there's also going to be grass...
On the other side of the garage, yes. Yep.
No driveway?
Uh, none, because of the garage will be a three-car garage and it'll be at the same offset as the house, so they're going to pull in right into the garage and there'll be no other access on, on the property.
Any other questions by the board?
Yeah, so did you already go for a curb cut?
Not yet, no.
Because we're 16 feet, right? Unless you ask for...
They have to go to the city council for approval.
Right.
Because if it's a three-stall garage and it's 33 feet.
Yeah, if that's 33 feet, that's, yeah, that's 33 minus 16, so it would be taking a spot off the street.
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm looking at the...
Depending on how it lays out.
Yeah, it's tight. I'm looking at the parking on the, uh, on the aerial map and there's a lot of cars there, so that's the only...
So to the... You're looking at the garage, to the right of the garage, that's going to be landscaped or paved or...
No, she's gonna, uh, so there's some shrubbery going down the western property line, she's going to bring the shrubbery all the way down to the street line and then that's going to be, uh, grass.
There's going to be more grass along that.
Uh, right, there's going to be, uh, grass over on, on that side.
Because it's almost 17 feet at the sure point, yeah. Okay, members of the board, any other questions? Anyone here in favor? Anyone opposed? Dan, do you have any other comments?
The only, the only comment I have is with the proximity of the garage to the street where people would be backing directly out into the street. We would prefer that, that be set back from the street a distance to allow people to back out and have some visibility, at least in the westerly direction. You won't have anything in the, in the easterly direction because the existing single-family house is there, but, um, anything would be better than constructing on the street line where theoretically they would have to excavate into the street to even pour a footing or a foundation. So I would, I would request that it be set back a distance, whatever that distance is. I mean, the front yard setback is 15, 12 feet.
No, actually, the, the garage, if, if we pull the garage back eight feet from the street, so it would be almost a little over half the, what's required, uh, she would be comfortable with that as well.
So you have eight feet from this, from the property line, then you've got about another six feet of sidewalk space. So that brings you about 14 feet of space for a vehicle to sit and see coming in, coming out, other vehicles, seeing a vehicle coming in or coming out. Only issue with that is...
It can park there.
Your, well, your lot coverage will now increase because now you're building driveway. So they would have to, you can still leave it at 92 and through site plan review, some patio or the replacement of that existing garage with patio space may, may have to come off. So they'll be bound by 92% lot coverage.
And this is a one-story, correct?
It's a one-family house. It's actually...
The garage.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, it's a, uh, one-story, oh, 12 feet high. Yeah.
Is it going to be a flat roof like a deck?
Yes.
Going to add to the resort. It's very, it's a very well-kept property.
No, it's, it's, yeah.
She's done a great job.
Trying to put it all into perspective.
Yeah, she's actually put in a lot of work to the house from when she bought it.
Certainly, yeah.
It's her little oasis, if you will.
Sure. So through site plan review, just when you're thinking of lot coverage, and we've talked about this, we do have the ability through lot coverage now to require roof runoff infiltration to be added to these developments. So we can offset the increase in lot coverage by collecting whatever we can for rainwater off of both structures, the existing single-family home, the existing accessory structure to the rear and this one, and, and pipe that water into the ground rather than letting it run off. So we can handle that in-house through site plan review.
Okay, so we don't need the table in order to have a offer to move that back?
No, it can be, we've done in the past where you just condition what the minimum front yard setback would be and what the, what the maximum lot coverage would be and then they would come to site plan review with those two conditions and have to comply with them.
And you're comfortable with eight feet?
Yes.
Okay, so that is the new petition. Does anyone have a motion?
Motion, permission to approve with the site plan review and the moving the garage back eight feet from the street.
And maximum lot coverage of 92%?
Yes, thank you.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. James Calkins?
Yes.
John Silva?
Yes.
Rick Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Motion is granted.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
I'll come in tomorrow with the check.
I will.
Give you back your cash.
Item number two. 644 and 648 Rodman Street, map I-20, lot 7, 14, and 15. The applicant seeks a special permit under 86425 feet in the city of Olivera zoning ordinance to construct a 28,725 square foot addition to 648 Rodman Street. Jeff?
Good evening, for the record, my name is Jeff Tolman. I'm an engineer with Northeast Engineers and Consultants. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Candelaria LLC. We filed a special permit pursuant to section 86425A of the zoning ordinance to allow the extension of existing non-conformant structure. Some of you or all of you should be aware of this property. I think you were all on the board at the time. We did come in back in, I believe it was March or April of 2023 for a variance for number 644 Rodman Street, which is the two-story 20,000 square foot warehouse closest to the River Trail. That variance was granted by the board, has not been exercised as of yet. Since that variance was granted, the, the owner of the property was approached by the Beneviti's family, uh, who, who are the managers of Candelaria LLC, and they're also the owners and operators of Portugalia Market. They've been searching for warehouse space in the city for quite some time and they expressed interest in not only buying the, the other 10,000 square foot warehouse that was still available, but the entire property. So basically, um, what we're looking to do is, uh, even with the amount of storage that those two existing structures would provide, they're looking to expand the existing 10,000 square foot building, which is on the corner of Rodman and Lawrence Street, maintaining the five-foot setback to Lawrence Street, putting on the addition, which is just under 29,000 square feet, and also connecting the two buildings with a 726 square foot addition. This, this would all be done under, like I said, section 86425A, which allows the extension or expansion of existing non-conformant structure, um, as long as the proposal is, you know, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, uh, which in this case, I would say that any improvement to the site over the existing condition of what it is now would certainly be a benefit to the neighborhood. The structures themselves are in, the, the bones of the structures are in relatively good shape. The exterior of the structures need a little TLC, uh, and this project would certainly help clean up the site and I think it would be a benefit, uh, to the neighborhood. The parking that would be required for, um, the warehousing, the total warehousing, if this were to be approved would be 58,765 square feet, which under the ordinance would require 19 parking spots. So what was shown on the plan, we, we do provide 36 parking spots to satisfy that requirement. So really, the only relief we're seeking with this petition is the special permit for the expansion of the existing non-conformant structure.
See, I, the issue I have is, as you alluded to in your, your statements, is that if it is improved, then, then it's an improvement, but I, I don't know how we condition it that the whole property be improved, uh, because if not, then I wouldn't find that, I would find that would be more detrimental to the area. We usually don't get into issues of quality of, of, of the buildings, but without an improvement, I, I...
What, what, what fear do you have about what part now being improved? You mean the existing buildings not being...
Yeah, well, the whole complex, yeah.
Well, so all you grant is zoning relief.
Yeah, I know, that's...
Site plan review would condition the project that, you know, the parking lot needs to be built, the landscaping needs to be done, all of those things before an occupancy permit is given. So...
So that's our safeguard.
That's a different, you know, level of, of permitting, not, you know, not before this board. You could, you could, of course, make a condition that the existing structure, the exterior of the existing structures get replaced.
Yeah.
And not...
Well, can we do that on, on...
You can do whatever you want, whether, whether an applicant wants to, if they don't like it, they can appeal it, but...
No, we're certainly not opposed to that. That's, that's the plan.
If it's going to make you feel comfortable, I, I am sure that those buildings are going to be recited, reconstructed, new windows, whatever.
Okay, so the existing, the one that we approved in April?
April, March, April, I believe it was.
It was March.
Gone.
This one right here?
Well, this would be...
The beautiful, the beautiful condos that was going to be along the railway path.
This, this would certainly take its place if this moves forward, yes.
That threw a curveball at me because I was thinking this was part of that. That threw a curveball at me because I was thinking this was part of that.
Yeah. That we're going to build more.
No, at that point, the plan was just to rehab that building with the sixteen residential apartments and still have the warehouse, you know, for, it was on a separate lot for a separate use if anybody was interested. It's just that, you know, somebody came along that wanted to buy the whole property, and it made sense to, okay, abandon that one if this does happen and go through and move on with this proposal, let's be for your time.
Any other questions by the board? Anyone here in favor of this?
For the record, Mr. Fiola Jr., Executive Vice President, Bristol County, EDC. I'd like to speak tonight in favor of the project. As you know, this project has gone through many different gyrations, including potential residential use. Obviously, moving forward in a residential direction poses its own challenges, some of which were acknowledged during the period in which they were seeking to convert the front building for that purpose, and then, as time went forward, some of those challenges became a little bit too difficult to undertake to actually get the building to perform as they were hoping to. So as a result, the Benavides family has come forward and has entered into a purchase and sale agreement of the purchase of the entire parcel so that they can facilitate their growth at Portugalia. You know, that Portugalia has been pretty much a, one of the success stories in Fall River in terms of its appearance, in terms of its marketability, in terms of its attractiveness, and the Benavides family has been looking for close to a year for warehouse space. There isn't a lot of warehouse space in the city. Even in the industrial park, there's a lack of warehouse space. You know, the benefit of this particular area is it's relatively close to their facility, so in terms of them being able to move forward back and forth with regard to product, I think lends itself to that effect. And if you just look at the quality to Mr. Calkins' comments, if you look at the quality of construction and aesthetics that has occurred at Portugalia, certainly the Benavides family is not going to put up a building here that they are not, they themselves are not, and as a result of their improvements to that building, I think the whole neighborhood will be equally as proud to have that building there. And quite frankly, as Mr. Tolman said, while the buildings may have some good bones, the exterior is really in bad shape right now. So this improvement to the to the building and for that parcel land would be a tremendous improvement to the neighborhood. It would help facilitate the solidification of an existing business within the city, and it would also keep a warehouse in the city as opposed to it moving forward outside the city. So for those reasons and others, I'd like to weigh in in favor of the project.
There isn't anyone here from the petitioner?
No, I believe they're away in Portugal.
Just questions, a couple of questions that are running through my mind now is our premise with this whole thing originally was to convert this whole area into more of a residential area. Now we go back to a warehouse, now we have to be concerned about deliveries, tractor-trailers coming in day, night, all around, it's completely surrounded by residential properties now. I think that's something that we should take into effect.
Yeah, it's not completely, you know, obviously, you have the incinerator.
Yeah.
Across Lawrence Street, there were other commercial businesses heading west on Rodman Street as well. Yeah, there's a large portion that has, but, I mean, this is zoned for this type of use. And I mean, it's maybe not for warehousing, but it's been operated as a warehouse for many, many years, and this would be a continuation of that use. I think personally, of all the proposals I've seen on the site, this makes the most sense. In talking, I met on-site with Mike Benavides, and he kind of gave me an overview of what he's looking to do, and I just think it makes a ton of sense. The loading docks, the addition that they'd be putting on would move the loading docks on the west side of the building, facing the River Trail, in all the commercial properties on Rodman Street. It wouldn't be on the residential site. They would block off all the access into the buildings from Lawrence.
From Lawrence.
And that would be the means of, you know, getting deliveries and stuff like that. So it wouldn't impact, it would be hidden from the residential properties that you're concerned about.
Only entrances on Rodman Street, then?
Yes, correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, as you know, this parcel, as well as the parcel across the street, were permitted for multifamily housing. Both property owners, this and across the street, have been unable to find a developer to come and build those buildings in that neighborhood. So although it may have been, you know, the approach that everyone wanted to head in, again, needing relief to do so, the appetite, the appetite for multifamily housing to build it everywhere in the city is flourishing, except here, they haven't been able to find somebody to come in and do this. And I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that, you know, we do have an incinerator at the end of Lewiston Street, and ABC Supply, which is on the opposite side of the rail trail.
That's right, we had one in favor that threw me off. Okay, we asked if anyone, anyone else in favor? Yes?
Yes. When I first looked at this.
Could you just give, give your name, please?
Veronica Jordan, nine twelve Pier Street.
Thank you.
When I first looked at this, and I was adding up the numbers, and I wasn't quite sure on Rodman Street we were talking about, but now, being a native of Fall River, I have a clue of where we're speaking, and, you know, given the condition of that neighborhood, anything that I believe, I didn't know the Benavides family own Portugalia, but they certainly have done a great job there, as Mr. Fiola spoke, so this doesn't strike me as a family that is, or, you know, just going to throw up a bunch of cinder blocks and walk away. So as a citizen of Fall River, I approve.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in favor? Anyone opposed? Members of the board, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the special permit based on the fact that, subject to worksite approval, that it will not be more detrimental to the area and that it be granted.
If I forget a hearing, we have to have two votes, right?
Yes.
Do we have a second on the?
Second.
John Silva, second. Okay, motion? We have.
Yes.
James Calkins, yes. John Silva?
Yes.
Rick Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
John Frank, yes. Okay, now do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve, subject again to worksite approval or review.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. On the motion, James Calkins?
Yes.
John Silva?
Yes.
Rick Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
John Frank, yes.
Who got that second?
Doesn't matter.
I thought it was John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three. Stephen A. Camaro, fifty-five Bayron Street, map P zero-three, lot fifty-four. The applicant seeks a special permit to construct a four-hundred-square-foot addition to an existing non-conforming dwelling. This property is located in an S single-family zoning district.
Okay, good evening, for the record, my name is Jeff Tolman with Northeast Engineers and Consultants. Here with me tonight is Steve Camaro, the owner of the property. As you stated, the property is located in the S single-family district. The lot itself, well, the lot itself is non-conforming due to area infrontage, does not meet the requirements of the S district, and the house itself is non-conforming due to front side and rear setback requirements. So what the petitioner is looking to do on this particular site is just to add a four-hundred-square-foot addition to the southwest corner of the dwelling. Obviously, any addition on this house would need relief because of the non-conforming nature of the structure. The purpose of the addition would be to enclose a pool area to be used to give privacy and to be able to be used year-round. Again, this is an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. I don't believe this will be more detrimental to the neighborhood. As part of this proposal, what the petitioner is doing is, he has already started to remove some of the asphalt in impervious area from the site and replace it with pavers. So at the end of this particular project, there will be a reduction in lot coverage. So I think that would be a benefit to the neighborhood. So therefore, would be, this project would be more beneficial, in my opinion, to the neighborhood. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And if I may, I'm going to give you each a pamphlet which shows a photograph of the type of structure that is being planned.
Thank you.
We're looking at the Crosso model, which is the model that I'll give showing you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And on the other side, I handed to you showing the Crosso. This company is a New Jersey company that constructs these, and the other portion is a retractable glass enclosure. The other portion of it is on the backside of the Crosso, which is the Stile, the one that's called Stile, that's two Y L's, so it's actually two glass enclosures to accommodate two, the two L's, two legs of the L-shaped. Bought this house from my parents in two thousand and seven, they built the house in nineteen-seventy, so it's been in my family since nineteen-seventy, and I intend to hopefully have it as a place where I can spend the rest of my years and hopefully get some exercise in what would be an enclosed pool, so it would be more secure than just fencing it in, although the rest of the decking area will be fenced in as well to accommodate the depth between the deck and the lot.
Where is the area that it's being removed? That you'd said that you're removing part of it to increase the green area?
Well, no, it's replacing the asphalt driveway and walkway that was in the front of the house with pavers. So it's labeled on the plan as former asphalt driveway, former slate walkway.
So it's not reducing the paved area?
It's not considered impervious area because of the pavers that are being installed, but it's not putting green space.
Gotcha. And one of the concerns, what is currently being done there now? How much has been done there?
Just the pavers, so the decking, and they've not completed the decking because the enclosure will dictate the rest of the decking.
So a cement area in the back half is where pavers have been removed? Because it looks like a foundation has been poured there.
Only, only for the enclosure, the, there's a concrete slob around, L-shaped slob to accommodate the proposed enclosure, and to be covered with pavers. It will be covered with pavers up to whatever the enclosure, space between the enclosure and the rest of the decking. And what's around the, was being, what is already been put around the pool area is Trex, that composite material, just on the perimeter of the area around the pool, the rest of it are pavers, Cambridge pavers, in fact, by brand name.
Okay, so there's a pool, it looks like there was already something dug there, but is it above ground, is it an in-ground pool or is it?
It's an in-ground pool, it's an exercise, it's a small pool, really just suitable for a single person, maybe two people at the most. It has a rotating water.
Swim spa thing?
Swim spa, and it's built in Fall River, it's built at Swimex at the industrial park.
Members of the board, any questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? Everyone?
Veronica Jordan, nine twelve Pier Street. So what Mr. Camaro has done on the property is he's essentially built a three-tier patio off the back of the house, which it's already there, and I'm assuming the board's not going to, they can take it down at this point. The concern I have is, in the neighborhood we live in, I have low-lying land, lower-lying land than Mr. Camaro. So now, from my sun porch, when I'm on my sun porch and I look out, I obviously see this three-tier patio, it's very well done, I have no complaints about construction of it, it's very well done. Mr. Camaro has provided us with this, which is, the neighbors, I'm not opposed, I've spoken to other neighbors, and we're not opposed to a structure, but we do have a concern about privacy for everyone because of the height that it's built at. So there's a fourth-foot chain-link fence right now, but at the height it's built at, essentially, there's, there's no privacy, like you can see this. So what the neighbors are asking is that contingent on this, your vote, that a fence, some type of privacy fence, be included in this. And one other concern we have, I don't know how familiar you are with Pier Street, but when it rains, Mr. Camaro could come swim in front of my house. So one of the questions, the other concern is runoff, as I said, because there are two lower-lying properties, actually, there's two lower-lying properties. So we're just concerned about, you know, well, the nature's runoff, if there's, I don't know if that's, if Steve has any plans about that, or if that's.
So because he's higher than you, that doesn't necessarily mean that the runoff runs towards you, he couldn't run towards the street. I don't know what the topography is because we haven't seen it.
So if, what happens is, at the top of Ward Street, at the end of LeBaron Street, the top of Ward Street is probably, I'm going to guess, twenty feet higher than LeBaron Street, and there's a lot of ledge up there, so the water all naturally drains from that high location, cuts through my neighbor's yard.
But the water from Mr. Camaro's land, does that run onto your land? Because right now, we can only control Mr. Camaro's land.
I understand.
So if we have the ability to make that better, we can.
Right.
So maybe you just want to have it go through site plan review if you choose to, so that we can look at potentially making some drainage.
I obviously have no way to know what, I'm just kind of giving you.
Mr. Tolman is more than capable of providing that information at the site plan review stage.
So that's just another concern, because right now, I happen to be one of the fortunate people on Pier Street, that I'm a little higher, and I have a dry basement, but.
How much property is yours, ma'am?
Nine twelve Pier Street. So I, he's, Steve is not directly behind me.
Yeah. And the barrier that you were suggesting would be along both sides of the pool, of the property, just on the back.
Just replaced with the chain-link fences.
Because they didn't want the maintenance that comes with them.
I know he's talking about fencing around the decking, but, you know, I mean, essentially, if you put up a four-foot-high fence as decking, I mean, it isn't necessarily going to add the privacy that I'm sure Steve would like and the neighborhood would like, the neighbors would like.
Yeah, I just want to assure Rana that I want privacy. You know, I'm doing, I'm doing this so I can have a private space. In fact, the enclosure of the pool means that the, everything within the pool will be invisible because the glass is going to be a, not able to see into the pool. And then, as far as the rest of the decking, that will all be Highland Fence, which I'm sure you're familiar with, is the company that will be putting privacy fencing around both sides, the backside as well as the, that would be the west side of the property. So, it will be totally fenced in.
On the property line or at the, at the, or at the paver?
At the pavers.
The pavers, because the pavers seem to be four feet off the...
Right, so it's going to be another amount of feet on top of the four feet. So, it'll be, Rhonda won't be seeing anything. Not that she wants to see me, but, you know, but she's, we've been neighbors ever since I moved there. And we have a good neighborhood. Everyone sort of keeps an eye on each other. And this is not going to be detrimental to the quality of our neighborhood.
Anyone else opposed?
Dan, any other comments about the...
No, I mean, other than, if you're concerned about stormwater runoff, which, which then, you know, the abutter question, you could require it to go through site plan review, you know? Just to make sure that, you know, this is not, again, we're not charged with fixing a drainage issue, but we can't make one worse.
I also have the sketches of the company that's putting, and they're got a, they've got a system throughout the addition. There is a drainage system built into the system. You all can have a copy of this? I only have, like, one copy.
Yeah, we can submit it once that planner view comes in.
Yeah, okay.
If they choose to go that direction.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this would be a two-motion again, one that it's not. So, I would make the motion that it is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
Do we have a second? Second. James Dawkins?
Yes.
John Silver?
Yes.
Rick Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to grant the special permit subject to site review committees' review of drainage issues and, and fencing or borders.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, James Dawkins?
Yes.
John Silver?
Yes.
Rick Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
John Frank, yes. Motion is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four. Michael Pereira, care of attorney Peter Salino, 1069 Wood Street, map D10, lot 73. The applicant seeks a variance/special permit to construction addition to an existing structure for use as an in-law type apartment, waiving front yard setback, lot coverage in an R8 single-family zone district.
Good evening. For the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of the petitioner applicant, Michael Pereira. With me is Mr. Pereira, as well as his wife Maureen and his daughter Molly in the audience. The petition that's submitted in this case is to expand those, yes.
Little Jackson.
And Little Jackson, sorry. So, the proposal before the board on this petition is as follows. Mike Stein would like to construct an addition to his existing single-family home at 1069 Wood Street here in Fall River. The addition is an in-law style dwelling, enclosing, or having a garage on the first floor and a dwelling above. The proposal would enable Mr. Pereira to connect this property to the city sewer system. The proposal would be to retain one address for the property. Thank you, Chris. The proposal would also keep the family together in one dwelling, or in two dwelling units on one lot. The zoning is R8 in this district. And as the board knows, that's a single-family zone. We do not, oddly, in Fall River, have an in-law apartment bylaw. I regularly appear in Somerset, Swansea, Westport, and all those towns have a bylaw that would allow this type of use for a related family. We do not have that in Fall River. So, the requested relief here would be a variance for use because this type of use for two dwellings on one lot is not allowed in this zoning district. We would additionally need a variance for lot coverage. The requirement in the R8 zoning district is 25%. The proposal is 30%. So, there's a 5% variance there. I've checked the box for a special permit for the expansion of the existing dwelling, which does not conform. The lack of conformity relates to the existing deck on the rear of the property and the porch on the front of the property, both of which don't meet front or rear setbacks. And the building inspector concluded that we also need a front yard setback variance. In terms of the different relief needed, I'm going to start with the expansion of the non-conforming structure. So, we all know that the litmus test here would be, would this expansion be more detrimental or substantially more detrimental than what's already there? And I'd submit to you, the answer to that question is no. First, the proposal would include a, effectively, five people living in this dwelling unit, which are Mike, Maureen, Molly, and Jackson, and then Molly's fiancee. And what was his name?
Christopher Rogers.
Christopher Rogers. So, you have five people. It's not a entirely dense use. The property is one of the few left near the Wutapa Pond that are on a septic system. So, I drove out there today, and Mike has a septic system, and a couple of his neighbors have a septic system. But during the Lambert administration, sewer was brought down to that neighborhood. And this proposal would enable this property to connect to the sewer system. So, I think, to me, that erases some detriment that's clearly present currently in the neighborhood. All of the parking for this project will be able to be housed on Mike's property. So, with the proposed driveway, as well as the garage, there are not going to be cars in the street for the normal use of the property. And then, finally, and interestingly, as I drove around today, looking at the neighborhood, the neighborhood's kind of an eclectic mix of property. There are some old cottages as you get into Lake and New Hall. There are some, what I would consider opulent newer homes on Hancock and Bradbury. And I also found a four-family dwelling at 1082 Hancock Street. So, I don't think, although it's zoned R8 like much of Fall River, I don't think, I can say unequivocally that it's 100% a single-family newly-developed area. As it relates to the hardship component of the petition, I think the hardship really is the proximity to the pond and the soil. When you look at the Fall River GIS, this property is 40 feet above the pond. It is 535 linear feet from the pond, and it has a septic system. So, I would submit to you that there's a significant hardship there, where if there's an issue with the septic system, you have refuse rolling down the hill into the pond and/or contaminating other properties. So, I think if the requested relief is granted, that hardship can be obviated. And it's not only good for the petitioner, but it's good for the neighborhood, and it's good for the users of the pond. And so, I'd like to deviate from my normal protocol because Mike feels very passionately about this project. And let him have a few words relative to why this project is important to him and why it's filed in the manner that it's filed in.
Thank you. Chairman Frank, board members, Mr. Agia, most of you guys do know me. I just wanted to tell you a little history about the property. My father-in-law bought that lot when he got out of the Navy after his tour in World War II. Bought that lot for $1. And he sat on it for a little while, and as his family grown, and as he became a police officer in Fall River as well, he, he built a cottage on that land. And he used to, he used to put all the kids, my wife has three siblings, he would put them all in a station wagon, and he'd drive up South Main Street, and he'd go through Little Compton, he'd take it like an hour drive, and then he would bring them to the cottage, and he would tell the kids that they were in Maine, in New Hampshire, right? So, I mean, this, this is a lot of memories for my wife. And as, as I was getting ready to retire, and we were talking about different things, and me, you know, a lot, a lot of my colleagues, a lot of your colleagues move out of the area, my wife was like, no, we're definitely not doing that. We, we want to stay here in Fall River, and so, and so do I. We're, we're Fall River people, we're invested in Fall River. I've, I've, I've dedicated my career and, and my, and a lot of my life to servicing Fall River, so has my wife, she works for the school department. My daughter and her fiancee, Chris, they both work for Market Basket, you know, manage, management and department head of capability, okay? So, they're not going anywhere. We'd like to just, I'd like to see my daughter and her son and her family grow up where they grew up, where my two daughters grew up. That, that's simple as that. I mean, there's no rent going to be, and we're saying in-law apartment, and I guess that's the industry term. But it's, it's all going to be one family. Well, you know, my wife and I are going to live in the apartment. It's not, it's, or that, or the new addition, they're going to take over the home, you know? So, it's not like we're looking to go somewhere down the line, even after, obviously, we're all not going to be around forever. But even after, my, my, my daughter's not going to rent it out later on. Her family's going to live in that, in that, in that piece of, of the property. So, I think that this is a, a good thing for, for us, obviously, for, for our family to stay together. And some of you know, that means a lot to me personally. And as far as the neighborhood, I've talked to all my neighbors, when I get the list. From Peter to, I've talked to all, all the abutters, and we actually have two letters. I didn't really feel comfortable asking people to come here and speak in favor of it. I mean, I don't think, you know, that, that was necessary. But I do, I do have letters for my, both my physical abutters, the person behind me to the south, and the family to the, to the right of me, to the west, and if you, if you're looking at the house. And they're, they're in favor of it. People in front of me, the nice family in front of me, that grew, that they've been there for 25 years. They, you know, they saw Molly and Sarah grow up. And when I, when they, when they found out Molly was having a baby, they were, everybody was delighted. There was the other family in front of me, even the people up Wood Street, that I really don't know. Because it's, it's kind of a neighborhood, we, we don't have neighborhood parties. Everyone kind of sticks, minds their business and stays to themselves. But it's all very, very decent and hard-working people, you know? And that, and that's, that's all we're trying to do. We're trying to make something nice here and something wholesome. And one of my neighbors wrote a letter last night for me, and she's, and she, I don't know if these have to be read into the record, but she hit the nail on the head. We've lived here in harmony, and that's, I want to continue that. That's all. With that, my rest, thank you, guys.
Thank you. And if I could pass forward the letters of Barbara Crowell and Mr. and Mrs. Philip Allard, which would be the single-family dwelling labeled 73 Bradbury on the plan, and the existing dwelling labeled 1047 Wood on the plan.
Okay, and the... They're not that long, John.
I know, it's the glasses. I have two, two letters in favor dated August 16th. We, Philip S. Allard and Edith R. Allard of 73 Bradbury Street, Fall River, Mass. Have been neighbors of Mike and Maureen Pereira since 1991. Their property, it bucks our property to the north side and the rear of the current house. See the drawings for the proposed garage slash in-law apartment. We have assured in good faith by Mike and Maureen that the structure will be used as an in-law apartment and not rented out to the general public. Furthermore, if they have any assurances of back purpose of the structure. Furthermore, current house is aligned with the other house. No objection to the proposed... Board, any questions, please call us out. Second letter is, dear Fall River Zoning Board of Appeals, my name is Barbara Crowell, address of 1047 Wood Street, Fall River, Mass. Home directly above Mike and Maureen Pereira's, home at 1069 Wood Street, westward direction. I've known them as neighbors and was part of, might have done life, my family, my child. We have lived on Wood Street in harmony for many years, and told me about their plans to build the addition. And my daughter Molly, raised with their children, warm, safe neighborhood. Think it's a wonderful idea and have no issues with it. Those will go into the record.
Thank you. One question I have is, the pool's going, right?
Yeah, actually, where the house is going to be, that's, where the, where the, where the addition is, that's where the pool's going to be. So, it's September. I kept the pool this summer because I, the weather was too hot, but that's going, yeah, that's going.
And the other question I have is, is it a, is it a garage with a unit above?
Yes.
Is that what it is? Okay, so it doesn't, I wasn't clear with the petition. So, it's going to be like a two-story garage with a...
Well, one, yeah, two-story garage with a unit, but with a breezeway as well.
Okay, connected two-story garage, so it's two-story, one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
One bedroom.
One-bedroom, bathrooms, kitchen?
And a living room front to back, like an open floor plan type thing.
Okay.
The existing deck behind the addition where now it's part of the pool setup, is, what's happening with that?
No, no, no. No, I...
Yeah, the deck that's off the pool is going.
You're going to take the pool and the deck down?
No, the pool and deck is going.
So, it's no deck on the new house, or on the addition?
No, it's going to be the same line as the back of our house. That's what, that's what Ms. Allard was referring to, that we're not going closer to her property. Same line from the back there.
And there's going to be an additional driveway expansion to accommodate the garage doors?
Yeah, well, the driveway we have now is out, too. That's, that's going to be probably grass area leading up to, up to a, the breezeway, a walkway. But then the garage will have a driveway, of course. Yep, yep.
So, this is going away?
Yes.
Okay, so the existing asphalt drive that's dotted is out, and the proposed asphalt driveway is the...
No, yeah, 100%, yes.
Board, any questions?
I just have a question. Would this change just like a two-family property? Is that what, what happened with it?
Technically?
Absolutely. Any other questions, other board? Anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? Dan, do you have any comments?
No, I mean, I can understand the value of it. I mean, it is a zoning variance, as John stated. So, if, to appease John or to make him feel more comfortable about it, again, as we talked about all night, there are different types of conditions that you can place on a project. One, you know, a few conditions that you could think of here would be one-bedroom only. No condominium, no condominium, no condominiumizing the units at another time. Owner occupied, at least one of the two things. And something that wasn't proposed, but just so that Mike understands, you could put a deck out the west side if you chose to, because you would, you could meet this building setback.
I actually have proposed it, it would be a patio on the second floor.
Okay. So, yeah, as long as it's not impurient, you'll be fine. Because you have plenty of room on that side of the house.
That'd be the, the other egress, I guess.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, getting it off septic is always a good thing. I actually designed the septic system in 1999. I found that in the file today, so that was pretty interesting.
I'll tell you what, never had one problem with it. Never, so...
Must have been the installation, not the design. So, no, and I can also offer that, you know, we've had discussions, again, I've been here a year, year and a half, and we've talked about different zoning changes that we need to make. You know, the ability to create an in-law bylaw is something that's on the, on the forefront, just not in place right now. So, with that, you know, we would look at square footage size of what the units could be, bedroom count, and no condominium. So, these are all things that we would probably, or most likely, be including in a bylaw once we got there. The timeline for such, I can't promise you when, when that would happen. So, that's all I have to offer.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, as relates to the special permit, I find that it is not substantially more detrimental to the area and that the permit be granted, the special permit be granted.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second. James Dawkins?
Yes.
John Silver?
Yes.
Rick Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
John Frank, yes. So, the motion for the special permit not being more detrimental, now we have the variance.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance subject to site review. Is it in the city interest to require a sewage connection, or should we leave that?
Oh, no, 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 you know, there has to be.
Okay.
There's no room for a septic system there. The septic system there now is pretty big.
So, subject to connection to the city sewage system.
Okay. And the other three, owner occupied, one-bedroom, no condo?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yes, acceptable, thank you.
Do we have a... I'll second. Did you get that? I know, I'm sorry, that was quick.
No condo.
No condo, owner occupied, one-bedroom. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Dan DePere. On the motion, James Dawkins?
Yes.
John Silver?
Yes.
Rick Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
John Frank, yes. Motion's granted.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, congratulations.
Okay, item number five, citizen input. Anyone want to say anything?
I'd like to say something.
I don't see any, but I'm not a citizen. And do we have the minutes from the July 20th meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move waiving of the reading of the minutes and accepting of the minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, James Dawkins?
Yes.
John Silver?
Yes.
Rick Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
John Frank? And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, anybody? I'll second it. Anything to get out of here?